Please, Shakespeare.
Go on your island.
As Mayor of the City of Stanton, I call the April 7th, 2022 Stanton City Council Budget Work Session Meeting to Order. First item, on April 6th, 2022, I received a request from Councilor Mead to participate remotely in the April 7th, 2022 Stanton City Council Budget Work Session due to a temporary, due to a temporary medical condition that prevents her physical attendance at the meeting. I will now entertain a motion to allow Councilor Mead's remote participation in this meeting pursuant to Stanton City Council Procedural Memorandum Number Three.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Pursuant to Stanton City Council Procedural Memorandum Number Three, I move to allow Councilor Mead to remotely participate in the April 7th, 2022 Stanton City Council Budget Work Session due to a temporary medical condition.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Mayor Oaks, I'll second.
Right, Councilor Darby has second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Kessinger, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
You'll need to skip her because we're voting on her participation in the meeting.
So sorry.
That's all right.
Uh, Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Dull?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. I'll now ask Councilor Mead to state the remote location from which she is participating.
I'm at 342 Sherwood Avenue, Stanton.
Good everyone on City Council, as well as the audience here, Councilor Mead.
Yes.
All right, thank you and welcome. All right, that takes us to the reason why we're here tonight to review the budget, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Bowregard.
Mayor Oaks, members of council, this is our first budget work session of the FY23 budget season. Kylie, would you like to put the? And we're going to bring up the PowerPoint quickly. Sorry, that was a loud sigh, I know. All right, let's see. All right, there you go. Okay. So the purpose of tonight, there's a couple of purposes. The first, very first thing we're going to talk about is the city schools and the funding. Once we do that, then we're going to dig into the rest of our budget and have you all ask questions, discuss further the other budget proposals. Hopefully, we'll get out of here before seven o'clock, so I think everybody would really like that. So, but let me start by talking about the schools. So, this has been a lot of hard work between city staff. I know I've talked to all of council members. Dr. Smith is here as well, and I know school board members are here. So here is the plan that we would like to recommend going forward that was a path to fully fund city schools. The first item being that the local contribution to schools for 23 is fully funded with no cuts on either side. That gap was $624,113. A portion of that is adjustments by the schools and the amount of $259,000. And the remainder is the city would make up the difference with a negative contingency and the amount of $365,000. If you remember, we've done this before. We did this in the past. At year end, we would fill that gap again. So this maintenance is probably not necessarily going to lead to any budget cuts necessarily, but it would eat into our any year end savings that we would have at the end of fiscal year '22. The second point is a future revenue share, because I know there's been a lot of discussion around this. And we've been talking about this for a while now. But the nice thing about this potential revenue share formula is it's based on actual revenues, not projected. You have the actual revenues, and so we're not guessing what it might be, but we actually know what it was. And it actually stabilizes quite a bit by weighting heavily on property tax revenues, and a lot of formulas I've seen do that. So rather than relying on meal, sales, and lodging, for instance, it's rely on property taxes, which are much more stable than some of those other revenues. And it relies on it about 90% of that. So that's, we're discussing that and feel good about that as well. And we'll be discussing that more with City Council as we start to talk about the '24 budget. Thirdly, is continued support of school construction projects is outlined in the school capital budget. And we've discussed this before as well, in particular, the Shelburne Middle School projects and the maintenance facility. So, we believe we have come to something that can be recommended to you all and hopefully supported. Again, that fully funds the schools, gets us on a path for the future, not only on the operating side, but also on the capital side. So I know Dr. Smith is here, and we're happy to answer any questions and Mr. Treyer as well, and facilitate any discussion around this.
Are there any questions by council members? Ms. Bearden?
Happy.
I'm sorry?
We're just happy right now.
Well, I'm, yes, I understand.
I'd like to ask a question. When you say adjustments, what do you mean by adjustments by the schools?
So if you recall, when the city staff presented the budget two weeks ago, there were revenue adjustments that, that the schools, that Mr. Treyer, were going to bring to the attention of the schools that could be adjusted. And in particular, that number, I believe, reflects the Perkins.
Title one.
Title one and the standard oper, what is it, the SOP adjustments, excuse me, standard operating program adjustments. And that gets you to the $259,000.
Any comments or questions by council members concerning the schools?
Question about the negative contingency. This is not, in, in, in my experience, we've, we've only done a negative contingency during the COVID, during that time. So, you know, it makes me a little uneasy because if, if we can't make that up, and I guess we, you know, we can if we just don't fill positions and, you know, things like that.
Sure.
But if we, if we end up with that negative contingency, that is the fund balance. Comes out of fund balance. And so what we historically do with the fund balance is do capital projects, which, you know, we need about 150, 160 million in fund balance to actually address them all. So, so I'm a little worried about that. I don't want, I would hate to see that become a regular way of operating because no good can come of that long term.
Yeah. Mr. Treyer, I'm going to ask him to address that.
This will be the second year in a row that we have put in a negative contingency. I can assure you, we don't plan on making this a habit again. I don't think you're going to see it in '24, so.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
And not to use that terrible three-letter word, because I asked Maggie about it, and just I said, worst-case scenario, she might have made up this negative contingency, and my question was, because I didn't know the answer, and Maggie, but had made me feel a little bit better about it. I said, is there ever, or has there been a difference as opposed to trying to tax the citizens? Is there, do we have any unbalanced type thing as far as taxation on businesses? In other words, do we have, is Walmart, Lowe's, our big, big businesses out there, do they have, are they paying six or seven percent? You know, when Pampered Pallet or whatever, you know, paying 10 or 12%? You know, so my question was that, because I said, well, maybe we can make up that difference if there is, but I didn't know whether there was also an agreement. You know, you can't touch this or that, you know, for a certain amount of years. And she assured me that we don't do that as opposed to what Waynesboro has done in the past where they said, hey, if you bring this business here, we'll give you a certain amount of, you know, breaks or so many years free of tax, but.
Well, yeah, and that doesn't, you can't touch the tax rate necessarily. We can't dictate that, of course, but.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
If I could just add to what his, that particular issue, in my mind, what we are currently allocating away from our taxes consists of the relief for the low-income elderly and disabled on their property, real estate tax. And also the Ag Forest School Districts, they get a break. Anything else?
Frontier crossing, I guess.
Does somebody want to stand up and talk on the mic?
Right.
Sure. There's also a program for disabled veterans and their, and spouses thereof. And we have some rehabilitated properties that receive some tax breaks as far as real estate is concerned. And then as far as economic development, there are some agreements, but they are not with retailers or individual businesses, but with the developers themselves. So, and, and Mr. Vaughn's here, I believe, could speak to that if you wanted him to. But in answer to your question, would, would there be any additional way to increase revenues by businesses? We are held by the code to the same tax rates on businesses on their receipts for, by category, the retail service, manufacturing, et cetera. So all of that is a level playing field as far as that's concerned. The only thing that we have discussed previously in your earlier sessions, as far as an unknown at this point, is the personal property tax. And that's because we just don't have that information until later on in the summer. But we will get it to you as soon as we can. Thanks.
If I could mention one more thing while I'm thinking about it, though, we do have properties where the taxes are delinquent. And, and so we could try to make a stronger effort to have them go through the very convoluted, long process to get it to the point where it's a tax sale, because when those properties are sold, they get rehabbed, or they get torn down and something new built. One way or another, a property becomes more valuable as they flip the house or whatever. I mean, that's, that's a long-term little bit of money there.
Councilor Claffey?
What was the negative contingency total in 2022?
$293,000. Not sure why I had that number in my head, but.
Well, that's good that you did.
I have a lot of numbers in my head right now.
All right. Are we having any problems covering that figure?
We did.
It's been covered.
It's been covered.
And how was it basically covered? Was?
Fun, year-end fund balance, sorry, son.
And what is our projected revenue for 2022 at this point?
Right now, we're, we're.
He wants to go, right?
We're running about 106% versus budget. Goal is 105, so we're about 1% ahead of that right now.
Which would be how many dollars?
About 3 million, you know, 3 million plus.
So isn't conceivable that we could have the, the 365 negative, 365,000 negative contingency covered when we see the final figures after July 1?
True. Yes.
And would there still be leftover money that we could put into a CIP fund?
Potentially. We'll need to take a look at the economy in six or seven months, and we'll make a call then, make a recommendation to council, and you all can consider how those funds are used in the future. So, yep.
Thank you. I just want to point out that this is, this is not that, it looks daunting to look at a 365 negative contingency, but if it's going to be covered, and it looks like right now it will be covered, I'm not that scared of it. Particularly in the fact that we had 293 last year and it all worked out. And I don't want to continue to do this forever, and I would like to come to a better revenue ability to plan on a regular revenue rather than have to do negative contingencies, but it doesn't look that harmful.
I totally, I mean, we totally agree. We do not want to continue to do this. And that gets to the second point in terms of the revenue sharing formula, which will be, can't be a more predictable formula for the schools. Again, not based on projections, but based on actual revenues. And so that will be a much more predictable, steady stream to the schools, and then we can focus on our other parts of our budget. You know, once we have that calculated and done, and so that will be, that will help a lot too, in terms of our budget planning.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Yeah, just, that was part of it. In other words, if, based on this new formula, that's going to hopefully fix any, since it's based on actual, fix any of this negative contingency that we might have.
Right, we'll just be, we'll just have more time to plan for what we need to do on the city side, and the schools will certainly have a lot more time to plan on their side. And so the numbers will just be available to everybody a lot earlier because of that, because we're still working on projections, you know, well into right before we get the budget done. And that's been very difficult.
And the, and the other thing that I think we discussed in the two buys, that I mean, the school board is, and is able, is going to be able to keep any, any orders that they might have, is I know a lot of communities.
Comes to their fund balance.
Yeah, have to give that back, but Stanton doesn't do it.
Right now, our policy is that the schools.
Gets to keep it, which I think is a good idea.
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Is this going to be satisfactory to the school board? I mean, we're looking at some school board members out there.
They're shaking their heads.
Is it a yes?
Yeah. Barrett says yes.
Well, that's what we want to hear.
Thumbs up for Mr. Dr. Smith, so.
And this is not going to affect any of the raises for our city employees.
No, sir.
In no way at all. So they'll all, all get their 5%.
If that is, at the end of the day, would send your adopted budget, then yes, sir.
Okay.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
So this will allow the schools to hire the seven positions, and it will still allow the city for the two that are proposed at this time.
Yes, ma'am. Is that right, about seven? I don't, okay, sorry, I wanted to confirm that.
Doesn't the city have a net negative three that we're actually losing positions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But Councilmember Darby is asking about the two new ones that are in next year's budget, which, yeah, but it still nets negative three. Yeah.
Well, not to scare council, I have spoken to a lot of citizens involving the school budget. And the school board voted on and passed a budget that they felt would fully fund the schools and provide this service that they need to not only take care of teachers, support staff, but the students. And as a past school board member, I can certainly appreciate the fact that the school board understands that they have an obligation to be prepared to educate every child in the city of Stanton, and it takes money to do that. I actually support the $624,113 in order to fully fund the schools. Now, Dr. Smith, can you come to the podium? And so you're on record concerning this agreement?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor Oaks, members of City Council. So do you want, are you framing it as a, as a question, Mayor Oaks?
I just want to hear, I want to hear your thoughts on this agreement, and you're in the back, so you're not recorded, and I want people to be able to hear it.
Well, you know, we've been working really hard with city staff to try to work this out. We did two-by-twos with school board members to make sure we were all on the same page. And then Ms. Bowregard and I, along with Mr. Treyer, Mr. Wagner, sat down, basically had the same conversations we had with school board members. We all felt that, and we do feel that this is a fair outcome for everybody. The reason why is because nobody has to get cut. Nobody has to take any cuts. We can say that our school division is fully funded and make up that difference. And then I think the most important thing is I don't see how we'll ever be in this situation again, and I think, I don't speak for just myself, but probably for a lot of us, we never want to be in this situation again, just by this future revenue share formula. Because even, you know, in our meeting today, Mr. Treyer says, we'll, we'll have our numbers by Christmas next year. We have our numbers by Christmas, and we'll know exactly how many positions we'll have to hire for. You know, it gets us back to a competitive advantage because we're happy to interview in January and February if we already know what our budget number is, and we kind of have an idea of what our openings are. Right now, like Ms. Bowregard pointed out, when we're still fumbling around with numbers in April, we can't even begin to, you know, make our hires. And in a teacher shortage, you want to get all the best prospects and the best candidates. So I think this is going to be really advantageous. I really don't see us being in this situation again moving forward. And it just took a lot of hard thinking, and sometimes, you know, we got to get uncomfortable to move forward and make progress, and I think that's what happened.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor. I have a question for Dr. Smith while he's up there. I'm curious why you all didn't consider a six and a half percent increase for teachers, because we, we have worked very hard over the years to get rid of salary compression and to increase the scale so that we were actually above Augusta County and Waynesboro in teacher pay.
Right.
And when we're only doing six, we're going to get back down with them. We're not going to be ahead of them. I was just curious what your thoughts were on that.
Well, you know, it's always, it's always about, you know, a limited number of resources, especially when it comes to budgeting. And even with the 6% raise, and John Venzin here, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, even with the 6% raise in our neighbors, what we understand is Waynesboro is doing six and a half, Augusta's doing eight, that our salaries will still be ahead of their salaries. And then when you add in our benefits package, it's, it's much, it's a much better deal for our employees than our neighbors. And, and, and John can give specific numbers. And then the final part of my answer to your question, Councilmember Dull, is in other school divisions, they've already given several bonuses. They've given up to three bonuses. Waynesboro just gave a, you know, a thousand dollar bonus in addition to the six and a half percent raise. Augusta hasn't announced a bonus. And, you know, I don't necessarily, necessarily think that a bonus is a great way to use your money. But at this point, when you have staff in other school divisions who have really, you know, like all, all the staffs in all the school divisions have worked really hard, you know, to get through these past two years, and they've been recognized with bonuses, and our staff hasn't yet. We, we're, right now, our plan is we're keeping it at 6%, but we're planning a bonus for returning staff, probably in, in August or possibly September. And so, you know, it was kind of, it was kind of a mix there. And honestly, the cost of the bonus is probably, you know, about another 1% raise. That, that's about an equal number. So all those things kind of factored into our thinking.
I just don't want to lose the competitiveness.
I mean, they are now, obviously.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's been, yeah, it's been in there that, that, yeah, that we're planning to give a bonus this year.
I think that's really important. I mean, I have heard that from, from some folks in, in Stanton City Schools that, you know, the other areas, they had these bonuses.
Right.
And, and so, you know, I do, I'm glad to hear that you're going to do that.
I mean, it's a people business. It's an emotional business, and if, if they see, you know, you know, staff in other school divisions getting bonuses and we're not getting bonuses, obviously, obviously, it's, it's hurtful. So that's really, it's, so it's a combination of a raise and a bonus. That's, that's where we are.
But just to add from a management perspective, a bonus is the cheap way, because you don't have to pay benefits. It's not ongoing.
It doesn't go to your retirement.
Oh, anyway, and it's taxed.
That's why, that's one of the reasons we've stayed away from it.
And it's taxed.
And it's taxed, and it's divided by 12, so a lot of times.
Vice Mayor Robertson? I'm sorry, Councilor Claffey?
Doc Smith, do you have any updates on what's coming out of Richmond? I mean, I know they called Richmond, the Assembly, General Assembly is discussing education this week, so what are you hearing?
We don't have any updates, Mr. Claffey, unfortunately. There are still two proposed budgets out there, one from each, each side of the General Assembly. One's about, I'm not even sure the exact number.
Then it's a lot bigger than.
The Senate's a lot bigger than the House. What most school divisions are doing for, for planning purposes is kind of splitting the difference and assuming it's going to come in right about there. But, you know, we've talked to our state legislators, and we thought we'd have our final numbers by March 12th, and here we are months later, and we still don't have them.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
All right, Chairman Venable, do you mind coming up and just representing the school board with the school board's thoughts on this potential agreement?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I think this is a very good point of where we are. I've always believed in, when you're looking at budgets, far as the city and the school, whether we work together, but also we worked together from day one. And I think when you look at the way that it's going forward and with the new formula, when you're working on actual versus projected, I never liked projected.
Right.
That's just like pie in the sky. You don't know. But when you have actual numbers to work with, it's very solid to go forward. And I know it's been a little hectic, but sometime you got to shake, shake the trees a little bit. And also, what I say in education is that we're never too old to learn, and I think this has been a little learning lesson for everybody. But I think we'll be better off as we go forward. And school board in total, we're excited that we're working together as one team, because all the money's in one pot. So we got to make sure we do the best things, but also we have to make sure that we let the city know and students, staff, and all know that we're concerned about them, and we're going to do the best thing we can do for them. And this is a good start, and we're very excited about this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Venable. And, oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Dull.
We have the vice chair and other school board members. Why don't you give them each a.
Absolutely, I'd love to.
Give their thoughts.
So, I would like to come up to the podium, and thank you, Dr. Smith, for your comments.
Forget their finance, Stella.
Yeah, well, never.
Good evening. Amy Ratchford, Vice Chair of the School Board. I agree in our discussions earlier about this proposal. We really appreciate the ability to get to a place where we're fully funded with the budget that we put forward. We're also very excited to get back on a trajectory of growth that can be depended upon with the new formula that's being proposed. The final step is determining exactly what that capital infusion for the Shelburne and Maintenance Facility is, because, boy, you know, that's a high, high priority for us. So, but thank you, and thank you to city staff and school staff for working so hard to get to this place.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, just not, not, not so much you, Amy, but is this will be the first time ever that this, this new formula for Stanton has been used? Or has it always been this kind of?
Yes, this will, this is a new formula.
Uh, been used, no.
Not used yet. It hasn't been used yet.
Right, that's, I'm saying.
Today, it don't reflect the formula quite yet.
I understand that.
But in '24, they will, and that'll be the first time that we, they will have applied it, correct. Yep.
Point of clarification, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Darby.
So, anyone else from the school board? Ron?
No.
Anyone else? All right. Well, come on up.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Christine Paulson with the School Board. I do want to thank you all for working hard with us. And also thank the community for weighing in. I think we have demonstrated that schools are a priority for Stanton and that that's something that we need to continue here and forward. I think we all recognize how important it is to have strong schools in our community. And I think it was a really good display of democracy in action to have our citizens stand up for schools and to have our leaders listen. And so I thank you all for that.
Thank you, School Board Member Paulson. We appreciate everything that each and every one of you on the school board has done to make this come to pass. We understand, again, that your concentration, and rightly so, are the schools. And that's what you were elected to do, is to represent the schools. So I appreciate the fact that you have fought so hard for the schools. And I appreciate the fact that the citizens have let their voices be heard. So thank you to everyone for all of your time and effort in making this become a reality. Granted, the budget has not been voted on yet, but it, we hit it in the right direction. So any other comments, my council members? Great. Hearing none, I think we're ready to move on. Thank you so much, School Board and School Board staff.
Okay, we're ready to move on. Well, thank you, everybody, again, everybody. So, yeah, on behalf of myself, thank you, and Mr. Trey. I know O'Harty's worked as well. I'm actually going to turn the presentation over to Mr. Trey. Excuse me, over to Mr. Trey now, who's going to take the first part of this and get a little bit into the numbers. But then I'm going to touch on some of the topical things and address some of the questions that I've received on the budget and some of the things that we've heard you all want to talk about some more. So.
Thank you.
And Mayor, members of councils, a pleasure to be here this evening. Mine's going to be considerably less dramatic than Ms. Beauregard's. Tonight, we're here for more in-depth review of the FY 2023 proposed budget. Our plan is to work through the general fund, environmental fund budgets this evening and the remainder of the proprietary funds at next week's work session. FY '23's budget totals $143,967. It marks our first post-pandemic budget since the governor shut down in March of 2020. General fund revenues are projected to increase 5.6% over FY 2022's budget and 10% over 2021's pre-pandemic budget. Both FY '22 and '23 budget years have similar use of fund balance and reserves and soon to be negative contingencies. During tonight's presentation, we will have comparisons to 2022's levels as well as 2020 levels in an attempt to provide you with a baseline perspective to our last pre-pandemic budget. On Slide 5, we will briefly discuss FY 2022 revenue projections versus '22's budgeted revenues. To date, our '22 revenues are trending in a positive direction. Currently, we're trending at roughly 106% of our budgeted revenues, which is 1% above our traditional target. On the expense side, as we will review, we've had to afford a tremendous amount of uncontrollable costs, many of which are unique to the city and which has left us with little options other than to incorporate the use of fund balance and reserves, staffing reductions to afford competitive pay adjustments, and the potential reintroduction of the negative contingency, which is probably going to be reality. On Slide 6, this is a familiar slide, it's been brought out many times. This kind of summarizes some of the expense challenges that we've seen in recent years. The Middle River Regional Jail since '20 has gone up $1.1 million. The jail did, the jail board did pass its budget on Tuesday. So the initial $307,000 increase is going to be in line with $273. We'll update these costs at the time of our budget approval, final budget approval. Economic development agreements, we spoke briefly about that. That's gone up $735,000 since 2020. In '20, we had safer firefighting grant funding of $178,000. These funds are no longer available. Our CSA, social service costs have netted out to a $160,000 increase. Our animal control, our initial estimate was $40,000. Based on the most recent past budget that just occurred this week, we're up to $55,000. Juvenile detention increases are associated with our increasing share of the population, which provides a basis of our funding. Mandated VRS increases, which we first experienced in '21 and again in 2023, 2023 was $300,000 alone. Health insurance increases equal 20%, roughly 20% for the last two budget cycles, additional $500,000 for the last two years. 2020's increase is actually a 22% increase with the mid-year implementation, which means that we'll have to incorporate automatically an additional 11% in 2024's budget. And the Commonwealth attorney, $170,000 associated with mandated 100% locally funded body cam position plus additional, two additional comp board positions, which were not in the 2020 budget. Slide 7 reviews the personnel actions and cost of living increases provided to city staff since 2020's budget. Again, we want to walk through the most recent budget history to try to baseline back to 2020's original budget. We'll start with 2022's cost of living increase of 3%, which was effective October 1st, 2021, $114,000. We added a sheriff's deputy position in '22. The proposed funding source at the time was to be additional courtroom security fees. Although we've not reached a level to totally offset these costs, we are at a record pace in a year where the courts were operating on a limited basis in the early part of the fiscal year. Next, we upgraded our clerk of counsel position from a part-time position to a full-time position. Next, on '23, '23's adjustments, starting with the fire adjustment, where we have incorporated a 7% cost of living increase plus additional certification supplements with an effective date of July 1st, 2022. Stanton has traditionally lagged behind our neighbors in this area, and it's the intent of the fire chief and the city manager to maintain a competitive compensation structure which encourages maximum professional certification within the fire department, which we feel incentivizes legacy members to continue to serve our community. Starting salaries for these 12-month positions will be raised from $37,800 to $40,000. Next is police. The focus of the police department's adjustment has been to ensure our salaries remain competitive with our neighbors and to address wage scale compression issues, which occurred as the city adjusted salaries, starting salaries, while leaving scales in the more senior-level positions unchanged. Given the shortage of police applicants, down some 70% from just a few years ago, and state and local law enforcement staffing shortages, we feel it's necessary to adjust these salaries in order to be in a position to recruit. Currently, the police department is down five positions, and the E-911 department is down four positions. And this position only has 11 budgeted positions in it. Starting salaries for the police will increase from $40,000 per year to $44,100. Next, library, IT, parks and rec and golf. For the most part, we are addressing compression issues associated with rising minimum wage scale. In the area of parks and recs, we are adjusting the maintenance worker's salary in a similar manner as a public work staff. Total cost, $73,000. We added part-time help at the golf course and adjusted the rising, for the rising minimum wage. That cost us $11,000. We had a wage adjustment in the IT department, which fully loaded, equal $10,000. And the remainder associated with minimum wage and salary compressor issues in parks, admin and library. Next, we have a general cost of living increase, 5% effective October 1st. Total cost increase is $494. This amount excludes cost of living adjustments for the police and fire departments. Department head increases will be limited at 2.5% instead of the 5% with the general employee base. We've added a housing and grant coordinator to begin in '23, fully loaded, $72,000 federally funded position. We added a park maintenance employee to compensate for the reduction in inmate labor available for the regional jail, about $42,000. And that rounds out this slide. Slide 8 summarizes where the city stands in relation to 2020's baseline and the use of fund balance. On the expense side, we're projecting additional 3.6, mostly uncontrollable expenses, along with the education transfer baselining back to 2020 of $850. Now it's going to be more than $1.2 million range. Offsetting these expenditures are revenues of 4.9, which leaves the city with roughly $450,000 for multiple years of staff compensations. Our staffing adjustments equal $2.3 million. Balancing our budget required the reduction of staffing, cuts in non-compensation line items and the use of fund balanced reserves and negative contingency. Slide 9.
Mr. Trey.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you repeat what that last sentence you just said slower?
I'm sorry. Okay. Yes.
It was about fund balance and negative contingency.
Yes.
Yep.
That negative word.
Yep.
Yeah, our staffing adjustments, 2.3. Balancing our budget required the reduction of staffing, cuts in non-compensation line items and the use of fund balance reserves, and now a negative contingency.
And our fund balance is used for all those capital projects. If we don't have a fund balance, nothing gets done.
True. Per policy, first consideration is for CIP. True. On Slide 9, we look at the overall 2023 city budget portion of the budget, which is $99,443. That's our general fund, that sinking fund, Blue Ridge Court Services and our proprietary funds. The proposed general fund budget equals $65,192 versus '22's adopted at $61,753 for a variance of 3.4 or 5.6%. As comparison, the difference in 2020 equals 5.9 or 10%. Other variances between '22 and '23 include debt service, down $293 due to a drop in Bessewell literary loan that, that debt has dropped off, plus savings from November's refinancing. Blue Ridge Court Services, up $63,000. This is, this is in concert with additional projected state revenues and grant funding. City capital is at zero. CIP reserve funding is proposed to be suspended in '23 in order to balance the budget. We hope to use 2022's year-end fund balances to fund these reserves. Proprietary funds, water is down $665,000 primarily due to a reduction in water-related CIP projects. '23 does incorporate a potential upgrade in the water lines in the eastern sector of the city for $5.2 million, contingent upon state grant funding of $2.3 million. Sewer is up 5.9 to incorporate sewer line upgrades for the eastern sector of the city, proposed in the amount of $5 million. This project is contingent upon state contributions of $3.8 million. Environmental fund, up $1 million primarily due to the regional landfill CIP requirements. Development cell five is key here. We have had some local staffing adjustments and wage adjustments in this area, too. Stormwater up $253,000 or 15.4%. CIP plays a major role in this increase, too. And parking fund up $37,000 or 7.4%. Slide 10 provides a summary of the general fund revenues. These, these variances are very familiar. I just mentioned it, we have the 3.4, '22 to '23, and the 5.9 back to FY 2020. And on Slide 11, we're going to begin to go a little deeper into these revenues. General fund revenues, total property tax in '23 equals $28,501. This is a $915,000 increase over 2022 and a $2.1 million increase over '20. Real estate tax, $20,492, a $325,000 increase over 2022. This is entirely attributed to new construction provisions in this non-assessment year. We have a $35,000 increase in public service. Interest and penalties, $5,000 increase due to historical trends. Downtown service district taxes aligns with current valuations in this non-assessment year. Personal property are wildcard. FY '23's personal property budget plus delinquency equals $6,550,000, which is an increase of $530,000 over FY 2022 due to valuation. Again, this is the one item where we feel is a real wildcard is valuation adjustments will not be available for a couple of months yet.
Phil?
Yes?
That's based on, basically what Maggie was talking about, is the increase in new and used car valuations, right?
Yes, exactly. Yes.
But that is taking into account the fact that you're going to go to the lower rate.
Yes, it does. And basically what we did was still not.
Maggie, can you come up to the?
Thank you. Sorry about that, Mr. Trey. I have to put my phone on the point five, times point five when I listen to Mr. Trey. So what we did was we took the historical increase. So we went back like three years and said, this is what we generally see as an increase year over year based on normal values. And we went ahead with that as far as the budget for this year is concerned. But we'll have to adjust that when we get those valuations in. Does that make sense? So you've, we've included a 9.6% increase, which is what we would have seen anyway, given no increase in valuations.
But you're planning on using a different rate?
Yes, we're planning on using a different valuation methodology. But we still expect that, that, to have that increase, if not, if not even more.
That's significant.
It's, it's really, it's really not.
I'm saying, I think our, our citizens are going to have a tax shock when their, their bill goes up.
But what we're saying is we're going to try and do the best we can to equalize that to last year. But we would still expect to see that increase anyway just based on the fact that every year that we value the fleet, the fleet increases in value because of the fact that, you know, 10 years ago, you could buy a new car for $20,000, and now it's $40,000. So it really is an average increase that we, we usually expect to see year over year.
Okay, personal property interest increase of $20,000 is reflective of recent trends. Personal property penalty, up $20,000 due to trends. We have a slight decrease in machinery and tools. Again, we're just addressing for our recent trends. On Slide 12, we look at local taxes, which equal 12.17.2 million, which is up to $2,830,000 over 2022 adopted budget and 1.7 over 2020's budget. Line by line, we fall up $210,000 over 2022 budget. '23's budget does reflect adjustments in the business environment over the last 12 months. We feel that this budget of $2.3 million is reflected in the current business environment of the city. Utility taxes for water are down slightly. Gas and electricity are projected to be flat. Sales taxes budgeted at $5,275 for an increase of $612,000 over 2022's adopted budget and $975 over 2020's adopted budget. These taxes have been remarkably resilient through 2020, 2021 and 2022.
Mr. Trey, are they, are, are the local sales tax in any danger? Because, you know, the General Assembly, they were, they were looking at messing with that. And they may still, for all I know, but.
Expert.
That's really the grocery tax question.
Uh-oh. I didn't do it.
Oh, we're done?
No.
No? Okay.
That question was it.
That was it?
That was.
We're adjourned. No, I'm just kidding. The grocery tax question, and it still hasn't been settled because we still don't have a state budget. So we're still, we're still at an impasse between.
Do it or not do it, or whatever. And do, do we have any kind of guesstimate on the, what that amount would be?
It's, it's about a million dollars.
A million dollars.
Yeah. And, and we won't know that until the state makes a decision.
Shutting down, Sid. No, I said shutting down.
But as far as the sales tax overall is concerned, inflation's going to have an effect on that. So we'll see, we'll see an upward trend as long as people are still spending. But if people start reining in their spending because of inflation.
Yep.
Then it's going to go, so that's really pretty volatile.
It's the decrease in. Is the decrease in the water utility tax because we lost Stanton's steam wonder?
I, it wasn't quite so significant that I dove into it, but I could dive into that. That would make sense.
Would make sense because they were our city's largest water user.
Yeah, yeah.
Should we take like a five minute break so that people don't think we're having a secret meeting?
Yeah, good idea, Councilor Dole. We're going to take a five minute break for technical difficulties.
Almost like the power.
Okay. Do we have Councilor Reed? Is she still on? Okay. All right. We're back from break. So let's dive right back into the budget.
Okay. Next item was bank stop, recordation cigarette tax. Based on recent trends, we're up about 90,000 over 2022 and 100 over 2020. Lodging taxes budgeted for a $2,000, a $208,000 increase over 2022 as revenue in this area continues to recover. Mills tax, 5.4 million budgeted, 1,058 over 22's adopted budget, 758 over 2020's adopted budget. Probate tax, $8,500, roughly flat to 2022 was with a variance of $1,500. Local communications tax, we sort of talked about this before, decrease of 175 due to recent trends in short-term rentals, a small increase of $2,000. Slide 13, we review other revenues in 2023. Other revenues are projected to be 19.5 million, which includes $1 million in use of fund balance and reserves. Licenses and permits in total down $6,400. It's made up of a decrease in building and mechanical permits of $10,000. Decrease is due to not having a major project currently in the works. Zoning fees are up $3,700 and dog licenses are down 1,500. Fines and forfeitures up 5,500. No major changes have been identified in this area. Use of money down $26,000 to reflect 21 and 22 trends. Given the recent rate hikes, we may see some positive movements in that line item. Current service charges on a whole are up $41,000. This is driven by increases in multiple accounts, including courtroom security fees, property cleanup fees, golf membership, carts, green fees, duck food sales, swimming pool fees being offset by allocation reductions as calculated by our auditors for water, sewer, environmental, parking and stormwater funds. State revenues are posted at 13,200,000, which is an increase of 403,000 over 2022, 814 over 2020's budget. Health and welfare within this section up $106,000 increase over 22. It's based on service level and program reimbursements. We will see increases in expenditures on a subsequent slide. So please keep in mind that we do have some offsetting revenues to mitigate the impact of the additional expenses. Constitutional officers positions as a whole up $205,000 for projected comp board increases. HB 599 law enforcement, we have an additional $50,000 provision to reflect expected increases in police funding.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes?
You said that the dog license are down.
Down, yes.
And maybe with the work we're planning on undertaking with the animal shelter, we can get those license up with a lot of adoptions.
Hopefully so. I think people just, just, just kind of stayed home because of pandemic, you know? I mean, it's not a huge.
Dogs are happy.
Yes, they were. Yes, they were. Federal funds totals of 1.6 million. It's 217,000 over 22 and 297 over 2020's. Health and welfare up 90,000 to reflect projections by social services. Federal victim witnesses up 54 due to grant fundings. Federal other 72,000, that's HUD funding for the Housing and Grant Coordinator. And finally, we have the fund balance transfer and reserves 107,000. That's made up of fund balance 607 and health insurance reserves of 400,000. Slide 14. Slide 14, we begin to look at our expenses. Thankfully, our expenses are matching our revenues. So our general fund expense, 65.2, 3.4 over 22, 5.9 over 20. Slide six outlined 3.6 million of the major contributors to this variance since 2020. Add that to the staffing adjustments outlined in seven in your general fund variance, at least on a high level, have been reviewed. We will go a little deeper. Debt service expense, 5.4 million, down 296. Again, this is a result of the loan drop off in November refinancing. Blue Ridge Court Services increase of 5.1 tracks with cost of living increases. The CIP transfer, as we mentioned, that has been eliminated, suspended for 2023. Our 2022, our 2023 proposed budget equals 71,872 versus 2022's adopted, adopted of 69,647 and 2020's 66017. Slide 15 is a summary of our personal cost variances between 2020, 2022 and 2023. Full-time wages are proposed to be at $15 million, an increase of 7% over 2022. That's a combination of the cost of living increases and the wage scale adjustments that we've made in public safety and public works in 11.6% over 2020. You can see on that slide, the effects that VRS and health insurance is having on our statement is quite profound. The schools have had similar increases that they've had to wrestle with as well. So it's not unique to the city side. Slide 16. Slide 16, we have a high-level review of our general fund budget. Start off with government admin where FY 23's proposed budget equals 7.1 million or $720,000 above 2022. Primary drivers, as at least of this initial pass, 294,000 negative contingency was factored in 2022's budget at the time of the slide preparation. 23's budget did not have that in. $70,000 in risk management as adjustments is made for actual insurance related expenditures. $83,000 for the registrar to cover comp board compensation increases as well as election, new election equipment. We have $26,000 in communication survey software, text and email program to enhance our ability to communicate with citizenry as well as the re-establishment of Citizens University. And we have the salary and wage benefit adjustments as we have spoken above. Judicial admin is up 160,000 over 22's budget. We have a year-on-year increase of 77,000 for the Sheriff's Department, where we added a comp board funded position that was not originally factored in 2022's budget, but did roll into 23's base. Clerk of the courts up 35,000 primarily due to 5% COLA. Commonwealth attorney, 42,000. Again, COLA related. Significant portion of these increases will be covered by the comp board reimbursement. Public safety, year-on-year increase for public safety is 1.6 million. Police department, 533, 438 is associated with the cost of living and wage scale adjustments. Add to that the adjustments for VRS and health insurance costs. E911, 101,000 associated with cost of living and wage scale adjustments as well as VRS and health insurance increases. Fire rescue, slide 29, associated with, again, cost of living and wage scale adjustments, the VRS adjustments, health insurance adjustments. And we did bump up overtime labor to reflect actual expenditures in recent years. Shenandoah Valley juvenile detention, 105. Increase population percentage is primarily, is primarily responsible for this increase. Middle River Regional Jail, it's built in currently at 307. We'll bump that down to 273 based on the jail board's vote on Tuesday afternoon. Finally, we have the animal shelter, that 39,000, the 40,000 is $55,000. So it sort of rounds out that. Public Works. Two-year variance, I mean, excuse me, the year-on-year variance, 127. 100% driven by the 5% cost of living. This is the area where we did reduce staff in order to afford the cost of living increases that was factored in after the 22 budget was approved. Health and welfare, total year-on-year increases, 263. 92% of this is associated with social services. We do get reimbursed about 80% for this item. Parks, rec, library and cultural, year-on-year variance equals 299, 300,000. 101 is attributed to parks admin. Minimum wage, minimum wage adjustments for part-time workers account for 17,000. Cost of living, scale adjustments and increases in VRS, 57,000 and increases in programming costs and seasonal activity guides round out the balance of the park admin increases. Horticultural up 30,000 over 2022. Cost of living and benefit increases, $10,000. Contractual agreements up $10,000 due to work volume and tree care up 10,500 because of loss of inmate crews. Park maintenance up 94,000 over 22. We did add the one physician, 42,000. And the balance is attributed to cost of living increases and wage scale adjustments. Library up 48,000 over 2022 increases are attributed to the combination of the cost of living increases as well as part-time scale adjustments due to the increase in minimum wage. So that sort of rounds off, rounds out this area.
Let me ask you a quick question.
Yeah.
Maybe this is for Leslie. Any word on the inmate labor opening up after April 1st?
There is going to be a limited amount of inmates being available. I think they said.
Men only.
Yeah.
No female inmate labor right now. And I can't remember the date you said.
Yeah.
I thought it was April 1.
Yeah.
Maybe it was, yeah.
It was a very limited number.
They'll be limited, correct?
All right. And what's the other thing about, tell me about the jail meeting that went on this week? You're saying a 330 number becomes a 270 number. I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah, they had made a few minor adjustments to their budget. They had repurposed some 100% locally funded positions into comp board positions. They were having, I mean, like everybody, they're having staffing troubles. So I think they upgraded some, two members of their staff to deputy positions, which is funded by the comp board. So that was a reason for that closure. We were still.
But I mean, originally when you were putting the budget together, it was a 330 number and now the.
307, yeah. And it's down like, yeah, and it's down like 273. Yeah.
Which is $30,000.
Yeah, not much.
It's still high. I can say that the Stanton contingent, at least Ms. Bowergard and I did vote against it.
We had pointed out some areas that we felt that there could be additional savings. And so, but the budget was voted on as is.
Yep.
Got a couple of questions over here. Phil, do we have any idea what it cost us a year to pay for taking care of state prisoners? Is there any, any way?
I don't have that number. I can easily calculate that soon as I get the inmate count. I don't have that with me though. I apologize.
Also, do we have a cost for the benefit package that for our employees? You know, like it's really, sometimes it's, you're offering somebody 12, $15 an hour, but then you could say what you're getting this in, in, in health and retirement benefits. Do you have any idea about what that is?
Well, our VRS rate has gone up from 15.24 to 17.21. Of course, your FICA factor of 7.65%, group life, 1.34%. Our health insurance is going to vary whether an employee takes health insurance or if employee asks for a single or a spouse or a family. So that's going to be your biggest wildcard right there. And then of course, the small factors for unemployment and workers' comp. So I don't have an average for employee, but again, that's something that I could easily calculate for you.
And then another thing is, I mean, I know that you talked about the 207 or the 270, whatever. Cause I know that was in the school budget, everything in the school things that we were doing. It was quite a lot. I think some unfortunate, there was some misunderstandings of, I mean, quite a few emails and whatever that basically said that we were putting all this money into the, to the prison. But that is not the case because what we are putting in is mandated.
Yeah.
And I dare say, if, if the vote was taken with this present council as is, that the idea that we would fund all these additional beds would probably fall flat as a pancake.
Well, we, we, we sort of were the deciding vote to, to stop the additional beds. Harrisonburg was locked in and, and it required four localities to say yes. And we were the ones that, that killed those additional beds. So.
Thank you. Yeah. I have to say, there was just, there was a lot of.
A lot of people don't understand.
A lot of people don't understand that and thought that we were for all that. And I don't think we ever had been, to be honest with you.
No, Stan's not popular in Verona.
I know that. That's all right.
Well, that's why I wonder about the, the cost of the state inmates that we keep because they pay $8 a day or something like that is really ridiculous. You know, and it costs 70, $100 a day to keep them. I mean, that's just, that's crazy.
Yeah, for the ones that the state's responsible for. I mean, it was, it was really good news that they took a big chunk out again recently. I don't have that exact number, but in the 160s.
160 something. They moved inmates away from the jail.
They take a big chunk.
I, you know, it, it, it seems to rise. I mean, we, 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 we do need to keep the political pressure on our representatives. And, and you know, what I learned a couple of months ago is that there's a budget provision each year, part of the budget provision that allows Department of Justice to pull these prisoners as they see fit. Wouldn't have to change the law, just adjust that, that budget provision and mandate it would be very helpful to our prison population. So, yep. So that and maybe some upfront work to keep people out. But anyhow. Anything else? Okay.
Excellent.
Slide 17, we have a summary of our major proprietary funds. Again, we'll, we'll take a quick review of the environmental fund. But, and, and the remaining funds we'll review next week. Water fund, 10.9 million. Sewer fund, 9.9. Environmental fund, 4.3. Stormwater fund, 1.9. Parking, 551,000. Total 27,577. A big chunk of that is CIP related. Slide 18. Total 2023 environmental fund expenditures equal 4.3 million or a million dollars more than 2022's budget. The majority of this variance is a. The majority of this variance is attributed to additional Augusta County regional landfill costs of about 551,000, as well as increased positions to adequately staff the local portion of our environmental fund as well as some wage scale adjustments. Our current rate is $20.88 for residential service and scheduled to increase by 15% in 20, proposed to increase by 15% in 2023. Our new rate is proposed to be 2401 monthly, which equates to an additional $3.13 per month, $6.26 bimonthly or $37.56 on an annual basis. We are projecting an additional 5% increase in 2024 for a total increase of 20% over the next two years. Future rate increases will be heavily dependent on the magnitude of CIP requirements. FY 2023's rate increase is projected to raise additional $387,000 in revenue, which will allow the city to meet its CIP needs of the environmental fund in both the landfill and locally. The rate increase will allow the city to continue with its current service model and to improve the recycling program.
Phil, so the majority of this is being driven by the landfill?
It is. It is. We have the land, we have Phase 5 development. We had designed last year, this year that we're absorbing, and then the actual construction of $4 million is the big driver. We have a little bit of heavy equipment on our side, but it's certainly the Augusta County Regional Landfill and their CIP program.
Okay, I know we have an agreement with the other localities when it comes to putting so much funding into like Middle River Regional Jail. Do we have the same type of agreement?
Yeah, yeah. It's based on tonnage and on a rolling average. Our average percentage, I think, has gone down a little bit this year to 20.18. I believe it's 20 point.
I can't remember.
Yeah, it did go down a little bit to 20.18%. Big concern, actually, with the demo Stanton Crossing, but that has had minimal effect, absolutely minimal effect. In fact, we've gone down. So they've done a really good job of recycling that material and crushing it, so.
But when you're talking about.
I'm sorry. And when you said that it would, this raising this would eventually would, I guess, help recycling for us?
Well, it's, you know, we are making some enhancements to the program, to the current program. We're bringing in some additional containers and we're modifying the hours of the program and the staffing level. So we do feel like there's going to be a bit of an enhancement to that as well, so.
We're going to talk about that more during my portion. And I have Jeff Johnson here, who's going to answer questions that have come up as well. So the recycling center in particular.
Did you have a question, Steve?
Yeah, when you say the future rate increase will be heavily dependent on the magnitude of CIP requirements, that's not ours. That's actually in Augusta County, the fiscal agent for.
Yeah, I mean.
Don't they control that? And we just get 20%.
Well, I mean, we do participate in the management and decision-making of the landfill. The one major project that they have outstanding after this cell development is going to be the relocation of the scale house and adding an outbound lane, which is going to enable us to capture weight going in and out. And we're going to have more accurate billing as a result of that. So, but if that goes up in this inflationary environment, you know, this could go up a little more. So it's.
But is that Augusta County that's going to decide when that gets done? Or is that going to be the regional landfill people?
There's a regional board.
Yeah.
I mean, we discussed the budget, we approved the budget. We just, I mean, I'm on that now. I'm actually the chair right now. Yeah. Woo-hoo. Got that. So it's the full body that makes those decisions and discusses that, so.
How does that work? I mean, is Augusta County the fiscal agent for that or not?
I think they might be their own fiscal agents. They're their own fiscal agency.
That's the question.
Yeah. Okay, sorry about that. Okay.
Does the Stanton Mall demolition going to have any effect on the landfill?
It might. It might just increase Augusta County's portion.
Well, assuming that we all know that it's in the county, right?
Yes, it is in the county.
Amen to that.
Can we make some of our. With the mall?
Good plan. We'll just dump it.
We can tell them that every day anyway.
I was just going to say that the rate, the landfill is based on the amount of waste we take there.
Yes.
And then they project out like what we're going to need over the, like, over a period if they need to do another, the next phase. So that's all done by all of you, right?
Yeah, and I think we, Jeff looked that up last time because he had asked.
I sent the response out. Yeah, 20.
58, I think.
I think it was 2058, yeah.
Yeah, so, yep. Okay, moving on. So we could forestall it one year, the rate increase. We've done that once, we could do it again. It would nearly exhaust our environmental fund fund balance. And the general fund could potentially be required to support the fund by the end of the fiscal year. We feel like the 15%, if we were to move it back a year, the 15% would grow to 20% in '24. A 5% increase in '25 would be 10%. And the '26 rates would be, would go from 0 to 5%. Again, we have to maintain a certain amount of fund balance in order to be able to absorb the additional costs that do occasionally crop up at the landfill. The landfill has been, over the years, pretty solid with their estimates. So when I get a budget from the landfill, I have historically been able to rely upon it, but heavy equipment can't go at times. And landfill equipment, heavy equipment is very expensive, heavy equipment, so.
Do they recycle or like, the mess that comes off the?
The methane.
That thing, yeah. Do they reuse it to burn trash or do anything like that? Or is it just escapes into the atmosphere?
You know, we talked about that a couple of years ago, and it's escaping me. I, that's another one that I'm going to have to get back to you on, so.
Well, as I recall, there wasn't anyone that was interested in using it nearby.
That's right.
And so, so you could, you know, extract it, but then if nobody wanted it, so.
You're absolutely right. That's it.
Well, see, I didn't know, like, don't they do some burning and incineration out there?
I know.
I don't think they do.
That's just shaking his head, no.
He's the guy, yep.
Okay, last slide.
His last slide.
For me.
I'm going to go really fast.
Okay, this is just kind of summarizes what we presented to you two weeks ago. And it just kind of shows the peak, which is 23. We're going to have to absorb about 819,000. We are projecting some heavy equipment. 10-year replacement of a street sweeper, which falls in the environmental fund as well. That's $250,000. But our next major hit is 25, where we have a $580,000 truck loader and the relocation of the scales of $1.5 million. So that's our next peak. And of course, you can see each year, we have some heavy equipment planned on the local side. Some of this has been deferred for years, and we need to start making up. We could probably kick the can down the road on one or two of these if need be. But Jeff knows where I live, so I'm not proposing that right now. And that's all that I have right now, so.
Any questions?
I've had a question way back on another page. I think it was 14.
Slide 14.
Yeah, the City Capital Improvement Fund proposed to be zero.
Yes.
So what are we not putting in there that have been in there other years?
This is mainly reserve funding. The fire truck reserves, the greenway reserves, the sidewalk reserves.
There's a slide that I'm going to show that shows just what you're asking. Okay, so hold on. It'll show the details of that 1.3 million.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure. Sorry, I don't mean to sound hasty. Any other questions for Mr. Trey or before?
Any other questions?
All right, and I'm not going to repeat what you said.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you, Mr. Trey.
I'm going to sit right. There's a question.
Under cigarette tax, is vaping taxed at the scene?
Said no.
No? Why not?
That's something that'd have to go through the state, yeah. And the changes this year, because now counties can tax cigarettes. So people are not, you know, we're on par with the county. So that's probably going to make some changes over time.
Ready?
Yes.
Okay. So you've seen all these details. I'm not going to belabor these, but I just want to open it up. You have any questions about any of this? And he's gone over the 5% cost of living increase, the 2.5% for department heads. One thing I think I blew through last time was the health insurance. We have a 22% overall increase, and we are passing along 5% of that premium to our, 5%, excuse me. Employees will pay 5% more in their premiums for, starting January 1st, to help absorb some of that. That is actually lower than this year. We did 9% for the current year. So bigger COLA and less impact from the health insurance, so that's all good. So hopefully, that 22% is a blip, and it won't happen again. And so, then we, but if it does, then we, maybe we won't have to pass on a double-digit increase to employees. I'm going to talk a little bit later about the new positions. But are there any questions about the COLA or any of this? And I know Phil touched on all that.
Health insurance, about how much? Like, we're giving them a 5% cost of living raise. How would that affect?
Not much at all.
Okay.
Yeah, nobody's going to, in other words, it's very important to me to make sure nobody loses take-home pay on January 1st, and we're not even anywhere near that. So, yep. Even if they're on the family plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay, I'm going to move on. This is more about the fire and rescue compensation package and the police. Again, Phil touched on all of these. Just wanted to see if there are any questions. And these cases for the public safety, these come online July 1st. We've talked about all of this previously. So just see if there are any questions or any more clarification needed on any of these.
As far as departments, how many people are, they think they're down? Or are they, are they full?
Which departments?
Fire Department, Police Department.
I don't think Fire has any vacancies right now.
Fire has no vacancy. Police Department has five base, five officer positions down. Emergency 911 has four down.
I have a question. The certification compensation? Can you, like, elaborate a little bit on how much, what does that equate to?
So for the master firefighter, it's an additional 3% on the base pay. And so that, obviously, that's dependent. On technical rescue team, it's a max of 2,500. Fire inspector, a max of 2,500, and hazmat, a max of 2,500. So those are the maximums that they could have, yep. So it's not insignificant.
Mark.
Leslie. Just curious, it says increased cities' minimum wages. What is, what is the city's current, I mean, and then what is it going to?
Stand up.
Which is the state.
Right. It's currently, it's not the city, it's the state. It's $11 an hour. That went up January 1st. And we're set to go up January 1st to 23. Hmm, is it 12? Is it a dollar? And I think the goal is to $15 in 2025 or 2026, somewhere around there.
All right, so $12 in January 1, 2023, okay. Also, John, with this, do we try to take care of the people who've been here for a while to make sure when these go up that their pays are adjusted?
So with the wage compression.
That's exactly right. In library and Parks and Rec, exactly what Phil talked about is what we're doing.
And that happened completely, yeah, you just mentioned police. Sorry, I won't repeat.
That's correct.
I would be interested, not right now, but whenever, to know, once these adjustments are in place, what is our, what are the lowest paid positions? You know, where are we at? I would like to think that we're not paying anybody 11 bucks, you know, but I don't know.
It'd be hard to get anybody.
We are. I mean, it's that's.
It would just be interesting to me to see sometime what our minimums are.
We can get that.
What areas they are.
We can get that for you.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions on this slide?
So our first responders, fire, police, their salary increases begin July 1.
Correct.
And everyone else, it's October 1.
Any other questions on this slide? All right. Moving to some of the functional areas, speaking of public safety, the only thing I'll bring up here is, Mr. Trey had mentioned the Animal Services Center. We did get a revised budget, so the increase is going to be another 20,000 or so by the end of the day. So that's.
60K.
Yeah, yes, that's right, yep. We'll get you that exact number before the budget is finalized. We actually have an owners' meeting tomorrow. We're going to talk about the budget some more, so. But we'll, again, I think this will help stabilize the center and improve the operations over there. Any questions about public safety? Okay. Health and welfare, not much to say here. Mr. Trey had mentioned this. These are mostly attributed to Shenandoah Social Services. And then this budget actually did change, and we're going to have to make some adjustments potentially. Some of this is because the state has increased the, a local match, and I'm going to blank out on what it was. But we'll get you those, we will have that information. I just can't remember. But that just came to me, to my attention this past week at our meeting on Tuesday. So we have a brand-new budget. It's, I can't recall what the increase is, but we'll make sure we have that information, and we'll share that as well, so. But that was completely out of our control.
Again, this is.
Thanks to the state.
Just like Middle River Regional Jail, landfill, we have an agreement.
Well, what's interesting is that they put so much money out there during COVID, and now they're starting to pull everything back. And it's very frustrating. And there was so much money going out to social services and for this, you know, to provide those services. But now it's starting to shrink. And so that's kind of what we're thinking is going on.
But again, our city shares an agreement amongst.
Well, they're just making our shares higher than they have been. We can't figure out the reason, and so.
But that's with everyone that's a part of it.
Correct, yes, with all the, yeah, with, all three localities are affected the exact same way, yep. Under community development, so here's where the new housing plan or position is budgeted. And again, I talked briefly about this last time. This is funded 100% by the HUD grant, by the federal money. And Mr. Vaughn, I'm going to go ahead and call on him because he can provide the best information on this. And again, this is, this position is designed to help meet the city's housing goals through the development of housing policies, grant applications, affordable, you know, promoting affordable housing planning. And so I'm going to let Mr. Vaughn step in and speak a little bit to this as to why we believe this position is a necessary position for the city right now.
I'm sure you recall in 2019, the city accepted enrollment in the entitlement program. It was in February. And so that first year, by August, city council had to take action on a five-year consolidated plan and an annual action plan. And they did so. And so, once we received those monies, that's really the start of a lot of work needing to be done for that one cycle. The next year, we started with COVID funds. And so we had two rounds of COVID funds that we had to do basically the same thing. There were some exceptions to the notification requirements from the federal government, but we basically had to do the same thing. Identify those organizations that would be using COVID funds, ensuring that they met not only their organization's needs, such as Valley Mission or CASA, but also HUD's needs and goals. And then we rolled into the 2020 funding cycle, doing the same things. And we started in October 1 with the 2021 funding cycle. So over that span, we have received $1.4 million. And keep in mind, this is not a project. This is a program that is ongoing. It's been in place since the 60s or 70s. And once you're in it, you're there and guaranteed. And once you're in it, you're there and guaranteed an annual allocation.
You're welcome.
I'm not looking at you. And so we, we have received for those five funding cycles, which is basically three years, $1.4 million. We can use 20% of those funds for administration, no more than 20%. For those programs, we received or been allocated $275,000, almost $276,000. And to date, we've expended about 70% of those funds. Keep in mind, the first year wasn't so bad. We received about $70,000. But you follow that up with that next funding cycle where you run through preparing the budgets, schedules, amendments. These are things we do each year. And each one of these headings, there's steps under that. Processing vouchers, drawdowns, developing inter-agency agreements, and then preparing reports for submission to HUD. For, for each one of these funding cycles, we do the same thing, just a lot of work that has to be done. And so we've engaged a consultant, M&amp;L Associates, to help us with that. Initially, they were key in making sure, ensuring that, helping us get ramped up and meeting those federal guidelines. We're still using them and they're getting paid out of that 20% administrative cost. So the majority of the funds that have been expended are basically paying them for those services. And at some point, if we don't get someone on staff to be trained to do this, that cost of services will continue to increase. At some point, it may even exceed what we receive annually from HUD. So it's key that we get staff, get someone on staff trained so that we can reduce our reliance on our HUD consultant.
Well, just for clarification, this HUD grant fund, it's 100% funded by HUD. But how much, how much will the person that will be in this position, how much will their salary be? And is it, is it an ongoing grant or will we have to pick up the cost after a year?
No. Once we enrolled in the entitlement program, we were no longer eligible for the state's CDVG block grant program.
Okay.
And that, that program is, is competitive. You have to have a project that addresses needs for low moderate income, housing, water and sewer, but it's competitive. So you apply each year if you have a project.
Okay.
When we decided that we wanted to be an entitlement community.
Right.
Thanks, Carolyn. We rolled into receiving, as long as US Department of Housing and Urban Development will be there, we'll receive a tranche of funds each year.
Oh, okay.
Forever, or until that federal program goes away. And again, I think it started in the sixties and seventies. And we became eligible because of our population and the amount of low moderate income individuals and some other factors. But it's not a project. It's a program like our environment or program, like any other city program.
Okay.
We'll receive that allocation each year, but each year you have to have a plan developed.
Okay, okay.
To show how you plan to meet, to spend those funds and meet those goals of HUD.
So it's ongoing?
It is ongoing.
As long as you have a plan.
Yeah, you'll get the funds. But if you don't put together an annual action plan, which will start in May for 2022 funds, which will be, which we'll receive in October of this year. If you don't have a plan in place by August, then you will lose those funds for that year.
Okay.
Is it the same amount of money each year or does it vary?
It varies. FY19, we received $350,000. If we put the two COVID fund rounds together, it's about 325, but that was unusual to deal with a pandemic. FY20, we received 352,000. And for this current federal fiscal year, it's $339,000. So it will vary somewhat, but it'll be around the 340, 350.
Does it depend on our project or does it?
No, it's not project based. That's, it's criteria that's, I guess, decided by HUD and how much federal dollars they receive each year to be distributed, not only to Stanton, but nationwide to all the entitlement programs.
So this position would also be handling the public hearings that are required. I mean, there's a lot of requirements that you've just got to do.
Yes.
But then that person will also have additional time.
Yes.
To do other things that might be helpful with affordable housing, looking at that or, or other stuff.
Yeah, if we stay within the HUD program, that individual will be able to utilize all the other options and opportunities that are within HUD, which I don't have time to do, but they're out there that we're missing out on that.
Yep.
Such as loan programs. We can borrow money against our future allocations.
Okay.
Outside of HUD, that person can work on the administration of the Arcadia Grant that we just got, $100,000, can help with administration of the EPA Brownfields Grant, $300,000.
Great.
Can help with the administration of our Brownfields Grant for Staten Crossing demolition or our 852, $50,000 grant we just got for the Business Ready Site Program. So there's a lot of work that that person can help do.
But the question, you said that 20% of it you can use for remuneration of employee salaries. So if you're getting an average of 350,000 a year since 2019, 20% of that's going to give you 70,000. Are we going to have more than that in a employee to administer a program? Or do we get to add in all these other programs? And this is 20% salary, is it going to pertain to the total amount of grant money or just to the HUD money?
We, we use 20% of our total allocation. We receive $1.4 million.
Over many years.
Over these funding cycles. Of that, we have available to us $275,882 for administration.
But most of that, you've already given back to that. Wasn't that outfit out of Pittsburgh that came in here?
Yes.
Did the grant?
We're still under contract with that.
Or what? This is our last year though, isn't it?
We might renew, I think it's next year. It's a three year. And then we'll have to get with someone until we get staff.
Unless we can do it ourselves.
Get someone on staff and get them trained.
But my point is, it's the 20% mandated by the 350,000 that HUD's given us? Or is it by the total? Yes.
Annually, you receive an allocation, like for this coming year, this current year. We receive 339,000. We can use 67,000 of that for administration, 20%.
All right. So therefore, if we, if we go and end up and get an $85,000 employee in benefits, are we losing money by being in HUD? I mean, is it costing us more than?
There, there's a potential for that. And I think HUD stated upfront when we, when council was deciding whether or not to engage in this, they stated that the 20% was not to totally cover your locally administered cost. This was, it was sort of incentive for the city or.
To have the program.
To have the program, but you have to show or put some sort of commitment into it.
We had to put the commitment in. We also had to get the commitment out of you that you're going to get something additional out of this associate or a new employee, you know, more than just administering HUD.
Yeah. That person will have time to do other projects.
They're going to have to earn their keep for sure.
There we go.
They'll earn their keep. And we can, and we can measure that. We can quantify that for you all.
Yeah.
So I think that's going to be very important to show what the outcomes are for that, as that position, you know, is that person does their work and what, what can we quantify and bring back to you all to show that? That'll be very important.
Good.
Very good.
We can, we can use the other grants that we've gotten for, there's a percentage of those funds that you can use for administration as well.
And then, okay.
But, but I'm right in saying that because we're doing the federal HUD, the state is, that's, that's off the table.
We cannot use CDVG block grant funds at all. We cannot apply for any of those.
And that's all finished.
That's all done.
Okay.
Does that amount to any big bucks?
It depends. It's all project based. And so having worked in other communities with block grant, I mean, you can apply for upwards of a million dollars for a project. Yeah.
But this is working on a plan.
This is a long-term.
Plan.
Commitment to provide services to low moderate income individuals in our city. I think it's great. I mean, you look at the organizations like CASA, VPAS, Valley Mission, Habitat, Salvation Army, they're all benefiting because our program, which is unique compared to some of the others like Waynesboro and Harrisonburg, where they take their dollars and they roll, roll it over to doing all housing rehab.
Sidewalks. West End.
We take ours and we funnel it to those organizations that do, already do a great job of providing services to the low moderate income and elderly population in the city. And then we also took a piece of to do public infrastructure, sidewalks in the West End.
And you know, we're going to need some more with that new building out there, units out on Middlebrook, going to need some sidewalks, just saying.
And each year, we can take money out of our HUD and put towards public facilities. You can take a portion of that as well.
This employee will draft the plan that will be submitted in August, early August, I think you said.
That person, unless.
For whatever program.
Probably not this year because they won't.
Well, yeah, of course.
But the following year, they will.
Right.
Yeah. Instead of me doing it, they'll be doing it.
Any, yeah.
Take like a five minute break.
Sure, sure. Five minute break. Thank you. We'll be back in five minutes.
We ready?
Are we ready?
Okay.
We're ready.
Next functional area is general government. And there's a couple areas I got some questions on. One was the proposed money, the 20,000 for the Equity Diversity Commission. And let me just clarify this for a minute. So right now, we have the grant of $25,000. It's helping us kickstart the commission. And Dr. Robin Stacia, who's helping facilitate, that's, most of it is her time to help facilitate that. That will be gone in August. We will not have Dr. Stacia after August. So my only intent with this was to provide something for the commission to continue their work on the equity plan, which council will see a preview of at the end of this calendar year and get a final plan at the end of the next calendar year as you, as the resolution was passed. So I don't necessarily think this would be an ongoing thing. I think it's just to get them to that point where they complete the work and then we can reevaluate what those needs are because, you know, the other part, and I was very frank about this, we don't have dedicated staff for this commission. I was supposed to be the dedicated staff as the assistant city manager. I don't really have, I mean, whoever you pick a city manager will have an assistant or deputy, whether that's me or somebody else. And if I'm city manager, then I would have an assistant or deputy. He would then staff that commission. So we have, so right now, there's, we just have difficulty in figuring out how is this commission going to be staffed going forward, at least until that time happens. So this money could help pay for additional facilitation, additional training. So that was the only intent of that. You know, and then we would reevaluate what is needed, if anything, going forward. And once, the plan is to build internal capacity for this 100%, like we have with the other boards and commissions. And right now, we just don't have that internal capacity. So that was the, that's, you know, the reasoning for the funding for the next year. In terms of some of the money I put in or I'm proposing for the communications and engagement, we've been using the Polco software, the survey platform, the engagement platform that was purchased additionally at first with ARPA money, if you recall. Since then, we've done a community ARPA survey. We've done, sorry, I got to check my notes now. We did the ARPA survey, which we'll talk about later this much, was had almost 500 responses. We did the survey for the Economic Development Forum that was last week. The entrance corridor overlay survey is happening right now and already has 106 responses. Shop and dine out in downtown survey had over 1,500 responses. And there are many other possibilities for this platform. So it's very exciting and I think it's well worth the money. The other item is a tool that will help target messages, increase subscribers. Basically, this will help increase our email presence and how we're getting out to people. We actually already pay for this. We just didn't have a budget for it. So that's part of that as well, is to make sure we have a budget for it. And then in addition, Citizen University never had a budget. We were doing this without a budget, cobbling things together. And so the plan will be, or the intent is to have Citizen University return in FY23. And I think it will be, we want to make it bigger and better than ever. So I think it needs a budget to do that, frankly. The community, community communications manager really never had an adequate budget, in my opinion. And so this, I believe this work starts this forward, moving ahead and gives her a lot of tools moving forward. So that was the intent for those funds. And happy to answer any questions about any of those.
Any questions?
What do you think they'd cost? The, the money for the Citizens University, do you have any idea?
So we put in $500 for that, so it's not a huge budget, but it's something. Yeah, it's not, it's not huge, but like I said before, it's better than zero, which is what it was before. So I know, I know Ms. Bixler is starting to plan that out. So she's got some other pots she could probably pull from. I mean, she does have a small operating budget that's, that is now, but she wanted to add some additional dollars to dedicate it to that. So.
That's pretty cool, too.
It is very cool. I mean, it might, and maybe it's been on a hiatus for a couple of years. You know, hopefully we can get people really interested again in, in doing that. So.
Well, and the polling, what do you, what would that roughly run as a year?
The Polco?
Polco, yeah.
Yeah, so that is, the contract for that's about $17,000. An employee survey is an additional 8,000, which is a deal. You do not do employee engagement surveys for $8,000. They usually run about $30,000. So because it's a package deal, you get discounts on those benchmark surveys for that reason. So it's definitely worth the money. Yep. Any other questions about anything on this slide?
Any other questions?
I think we're ready. Yeah, great. All right, moving right along. Okay, recycling, here we go. I have Jeff Johnson at the podium. This budget, as you know, does continue the centralized program. There have been some questions that we have been asked about what happens, what would it cost to go back to curbside and what would that mean for the program? So I'm going to skip right to this slide and I hope this slide makes sense. I'm going to walk everybody through it. Basically, if we were to go back to curbside, we would need to hire four additional employees. And you see the overtime and benefits there. Fuel, of course, to run more trucks more often, repairs. And then we do have containers in the park that could be taken off. So the total incremental cost is just over three, about $302,000. The FY23 budget includes 132,000 for the centralized program. And so then if you put back in the container, is Phil still here? Yeah, he is. He might, I might have to get him to answer some questions about this. Basically, the new money that would have to be identified is just about $191,000 to go back to curbside only. But here is where I'm going to ask Mr. Johnson to weigh in, because it's not just about doing curbside, it's about how, mostly around how we recycle plastics, how those are recycled. I'm going to be quiet and let him talk.
Okay. So the issue when it comes to curbside collection is, right now, we do not have a destination where we can get rid of plastic that's collected at the curb. All of our local vendors will only take plastic that's been collected at a curated, manned collection point. So if we go to solely curbside collection, we would have to go get back out of the plastic business like we were prior to this last July. There just is not a market. Curbside plastic requires a sorting facility. And we do not have a sorting facility. The closest ones, there's one in Roanoke, there's one in Manassas, there's one in Hagerstown. And there's one in Richmond. So pretty much two hours in any direction you can find one, but that's just a little too far. I had a brief conversation with Sunoco about their sorting facility in Raleigh, North Carolina, that they said they would make available to us, but it would be a market rate arrangement. So they couldn't give me and hold me, give me a number that we, I could hang a hat on. And so that would, that would be another possibility. But we really do not have access to a sorting facility that'll allow us to just scoop up plastic at the curb and let someone else sort it. The quality requirements for plastic remain extremely high. I'll tell you, I pulled a, I pulled a shift at the recycling center this Saturday. And, and, and that was four hours of dealing with the folks who are coming down to the recycling center, who are arguably the most recycling conscious folks around. And I still filled up two 40-gallon trashcans with, with the wrong kind of plastic that they brought down. Because it's not just about, is this number one? You know, the difference between the number one and the number six can be very, very subtle. But also, it has to be the right color, has to be the right shape. The rules are extreme. And when I say I was, that there's a lot of the wrong plastic, that is not casting any aspersions on any of the residents of Stanton. That's just an indication of how complicated and precise the regulations are. And they're a little bit fluid. They've changed two or three times, just in the nine months that we've been doing plastics recycling. So, so, so plastic recycling would require a central collection. So to make, so to have both curbside and plastic would require both, would require both trucks on the road and our central collection. But as much as I know this is all about numbers, my concerns with recycling are really more about operations. Because nine months in, we are still struggling to staff the central location. We can't retain, we can't recruit and retain, retain the adequate folks to run that. So the prospect of expanding that back into curbside, or even worse, I'm not saying worse, but even more daunting, the possibility of having to do both and maintain that level is, does not inspire me with a lot of confidence. And the thing about curbside recycling is, it is not just a service, it's a commitment. It's a commitment to get a truck to the end of every driveway, to the end of every front walk in town, every week. And if it's not, I hate to make promises we can't keep. And I'm just not sure, even with the money, I'm not sure we'd be able to do that on a regular basis.
Any questions?
I have, I have a lot. So, so you're saying we need to hire four additional employees over what we have now?
We, right now, the recycling center runs with part-time employees. We would need to convert two part-time to two full-time and then hire, so we need to bring on four new full-time employees. I, because I guess in theory, we could convert, if the part-time people were interested in converting to full-time, we could convert them.
So you'd need three. If you're changing two part-times to a full-time, you already got that.
Yep. We had based this originally on maintaining the, the current recycling structure that we have now and then adding these four positions on for curbside. So this is kind of doing both. And then if, if we were to get rid of the centralized services, I just backed out their current budget.
Right. Right, so that 132 decrement includes the two part-time employees.
Okay, so, but they're, but they're included in that four?
Uh, no, no, no.
Not included? Okay. So here's my pitch. I'm the one that had questions about this. Because to me, there's a whole lot of things wrong. I think the location of that place is dreadful. And I don't see a good location. You don't want it downtown, I don't think. You don't want it in anybody's neighborhood. And then the other big issue is the issue of fairness. The fact that elderly, disabled, people that don't have a car, people that have little kids and can't get them all piled into the car along with all the recyclings to go down and hit that little window when it's open, or the people that work shifts that don't allow them to ever use it. They're all still paying for this recycling. And they cannot use it. And it's not, it's not fair to any of them. And I don't see any plan to, to fix that. We're just gonna make those people pay and never be able to recycle. We had a history of recycling in this city. We were on the front end, we were, we were progressive in that and caring about it. And then we've just dumped it. And people are just horrified. They can't get it recycled. You know, there were incidences of bee stings at that centralized recycling place. And I have faith in our citizens that if we gave them a cheat sheet that was like bullet points that said, we take this and you gotta do this to it. We take this and you gotta do this to prep it, that they can do it. I have, they're not stupid people here in Stanton. I think they could do it. And I, and I think if it costs us a little extra, we should consider it.
Terry?
We need another truck. I thought we needed another truck to, to do the recycling. That was one of the reasons that we went to doing it at a centralized location.
Well, the, the three recycling trucks that we still have on our inventory, because again, it's a pilot program, we haven't undone anything that we can't, you know, turn back on. Obviously, have not been logging the miles in this last nine months, they have been previously. So the need for the, for, for vehicle replacement has been deferred a bit. But now that, if we started running the routes again, that clock would start ticking again towards equipment replacement.
And if we had, what happens to the plastic if we can't get rid of it? Does it just get ground up at the landfill?
It goes straight, it goes in, straight into the landfill, as-
So it doesn't even get anything done to it?
No, it goes into the landfill as general refuse. It can, it's-
Does the landfill have a place to recycle plastic?
No, the landfill does not accept plastic for recycling.
Only glass, only metal and glass and, because I know people take stuff out there, they don't take it here.
The county operates a refilled, a recycling center at the landfill. So it's at the landfill, but it's operated by the county, but they don't take plastic. They take glass, metal, cardboard and paper.
You can take plastic there. You just, they're not gonna recycle it.
Right.
You just-
And, and, and as far as, you know, I will tell you that in the nine months doing up in recycling, you know, it's leaps and bounds on how quickly everyone has picked up on the rules and the cheat sheets. We go through hundreds of them, pass them all the time. The issue is there's just no place, regardless of, of what folks are doing, I have no place to take curbside plastic. There is just not a vendor who will accept it.
Now.
Now.
So these figures do not include being able to take plastics to Richmond or-
No.
A vendor, Roanoke?
Because I was unable to put a solid number on that. They would, they would say that we pay a market, they would charge us the market rate for what of the transportation is.
Because we're only, you're only doing one and two anyway.
Right, right now.
Right now.
And that 70,000 fuel bill could actually, depending on what happens, could go higher.
Route fuel is fairly consistent. I mean, the, the route's the route regardless of how much recycling's on it. So that fuel number's pretty tight.
And would these four employees do nothing else but drive the recycling truck?
Well, these days, everyone at Public Works is in the market to do something else on a given day. But I can tell you that the recycling routes are the same as the refuse routes. We cover the refuse routes with four trucks, four times a day. With two trucks, each with a driver and a loader, covering, they would have to, they have to cover twice as much in the same time as the refuse trucks, which is a challenge. Refuge weighs more, but it's, it's, you pick it up, you put it in the same, in the same hopper and you move on. When you're collecting recycling, you've got to get the glass into its container, the paper into its container, et cetera, et cetera. So from a time standpoint, two trucks, yeah, it's a full, it's a full day's effort to get to cover all the routes with just those two trucks.
So they would do, that's all they do, five days, eight hours a day?
Four days a week, 10 hours, four days a week, 10 hours a day.
Four days a week, 10 hours a day. How, how did we do it before?
Same way, four trucks, two trucks, two, each with two people.
Okay, well, it was doable before.
Well, we weren't doing it, we were not doing it very well towards the end of 2020. No, again, when, again, with a full staff, with a full staff, it's doable.
Yeah.
But we have not had a full staff. And I'm not confident that we will be at a stable full staff. It would, it would be difficult.
Then does anybody have a plan for how we can make this right for the people who can't recycle now? We took it away from them.
I think that, I totally hear what you're saying. And that also has, I've thought about that a lot. Why don't, can we spend some time on this? And at the next work session, we can discuss this some more. Because I do think it's really important, because if we're gonna continue to do a centralized program, we absolutely need to figure out a way to allow more, you know, just to get people to have more access, absolutely. So I jotted a few ideas down here, but if we can be allowed until the next meeting or until the 21st, to at least start talking about those and continue that engagement even after the budget, which for sure needs to happen, then if that's acceptable, then that would be great.
Because there are many people who just don't recycle anymore.
Right. I totally understand.
Because they can't.
Yep.
When you were talking about using, possibly using Sunoco in Raleigh, would they pick the stuff up and then figure out if it was, will we possibly get billed for them taking it? Or-
Oh, we would absolutely, we would absolutely be, but we would, we would deposit it at their, at their transfer facility in Fishersville, where they would bail it and then truck it to Raleigh to be sorted and processed. And we would pay for that service. So it would, we would go from, we would go from plastics being a commodity for which we are paid, to plastics being a commodity for which we have to pay in order to take it off our hands.
But we wouldn't have any idea at first what that would be?
I mean, they, I, I'm sure if I asked them today what the, what the number was, they could give me a number, but that number will fluctuate as their costs fluctuate.
The market rate.
They call it a market rate.
Well, would the, would the price of plastic go up if petroleum stays, I mean, the recycle? Or no?
I, I, if I had that kind of insight into the commodities market, I would not be in this job. I'd be in a much different job. So I, prices have been relatively stable for the plastics market for the nine months that we've been in this business, but I imagine they could go one way or the other. We really, I mean, as much plastic as we generate, and we do generate on a per capita basis more than Harrisonburg or, which is the only other place that's doing plastics in the area. It's still not enough that the, you know, a few cents per pound, per ton changes makes a whole big change to our bottom line.
So this, this 197.48, we would eventually have, within a short period of time, have to build in a new truck, wouldn't we?
Yes, yes. At some point.
Sorry, how many positions are you, have open now?
In refuse, John, two full-time and a part-time? We're close.
And that doesn't include the, the 10 positions?
That does not include the positions that were defunded. That's, that's funded vacancies. But we're, 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 we're close. The issue is, but also there's a retention issue. We, we hired, we've hired two recycling attendants in the past 90 days. One stayed five weeks, one stayed one day. So there's, that's the other part that gives me some pause. It's been very difficult to hold on to them.
Anything else? Great, moving on.
May I make a bold suggestion? Since it's 7-Eleven, I mean, we can keep going, but I had scheduled almost an hour for the school joint budget work session next week, but Ms. Dr. Smith said they wouldn't need anywhere near that time at this point. So I wonder if we could continue this next week?
What's council's pleasure? Do you want to keep going or?
Keep going or?
Or pick it up next week?
How much longer is your freezing?
Not too much longer. I mean, just, just, they should go pretty quick, actually. So I'm happy to keep going.
I'm under the mindset just to keep going.
I think this will be quick. I do, I believe this will be quick. All right, I'm gonna keep going and you all-
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. The only thing I want to point out here under Recreation, Parks and Library is the other new position, which Mr. Traer mentioned earlier, which is the Parks Maintenance Position, which again, is in response to, we had used, been pretty dependent on inmate labor in the past. And even though that is starting up again at a limited basis, there's no, we don't, we should not be relying on inmate labor to do the maintenance of our parks and recreation areas. So this additional position will help alleviate that. Any questions about that at all? Moving on. So here's the capital plan. And really, I want to get to the next slide, because this is the slide that got cut. And Ms. Doll, this is to answer your question about the 1.3 million. So these are the projects that are now zero. The intent, of course, is to reestablish these at the end of fiscal year '22, which is what we've done before as well. So that's the note at the bottom of this slide, that this is basically the list of those projects that were attached to that 1.371 million. So that, those are the details of that. And again, that's a zero now in the budget, and we've talked about this lots, but the intent is to take FY22 year-end and reestablish these projects. You know, as you all decide, you know, we'll recommend that and then you all can decide at the end of the day. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention again. Mr. Traer talked a lot about budget balancing, so I won't belabor this slide. You've, you've heard all this before. So, but I, what I do want to just run through pretty quickly, because you've seen this list, too, is the unfunded new requests. So you'll see the top, we were working with a $3.3 million deficit, which was basically the difference between revenues and all the expenses, including all the new requests. And so we started to whittle that down. I think the big story in, under wages and benefits is that there are, again, two fire department positions that are, that remain unfunded. Their priority was the salary and compensation package, and they made that very clear. So they weren't thrilled, but they were very happy with what they received in the budget at the end of the day. There's also, you'll see a reduction for the department head adjustment, which is only two and a half percent. And then we moved, there was some savings with moving. We had originally the, the adjustment for the rest of the workforce on July 1st, which we moved to October 1st. So that saved some dollars. And then you get into the operational side of things. And this is where all the one-time requests are falling. And I'm not gonna read this list, but you can see the types of requests that we received. And again, I'm just gonna keep going here, it's, you have it in front of you. A lot of these, we, or many of these, all of these, actually, we could revisit when we look at the ARPA funds later this month and early next month. So I'll give you an example, the 100,000 for Weston Plan, and that's with the small area plan that's in your strategic plan. Well, we're gonna find a way to pay for that. So that's, you know, some of these we know are gonna happen, others will have to decide what is the priority of any number of these. And then this is the end of the list. And as I mentioned before, you know, for one-time requests, we're gonna revisit this with you when we discuss ARPA. And then we're gonna try to replenish, here's the CIP reserve again, the 1.37, replenish that with 22-year end. Any questions about that? And we can look again at this list when we go through the ARPA money, of course, or we can try to prioritize it first and put it in front of you. Just because they asked for it, doesn't make it all equal necessarily. So there's probably some higher priority needs in here than others. And so we'll put that list back in front of you. Any questions about any of this?
Any questions? The robot vacuum did not make the cut.
Sorry. But there's a cool park vacuum that might be kind of cool, a robot, that's not in here, though.
What about the, the West End planning?
Yeah, that was, I talked about that. That was the stress fall area plan. Yep, and so that's definitely high on the list.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Perfect.
Sure. Okay.
The economic development for $76,000? Funds in the EBA that can pay for this?
Does the EBA have any-
It has a fund. You don't want to know about it.
It may have some capacity, but that was budgeted out. That would be another item that, that we might be able to fund with carryover, possible ARPA with loss of revenue calculations.
But you bring a report to EDA meetings of what the balances are in the EDA, wherever the expenditures.
Mostly that, what you're seeing there is like pass-through revenues for the EDA itself. This is more of the city department, economic development department for the city. So it's kind of two different funds going on there, so.
He looks confused.
I'm confused. I understand it, that city, but you're saying it's Stanton Crossing Marketing Plan?
Yeah. Yeah.
Can we pull any of that $76,000 out of the EDA?
Um, we fund the EDA.
I know that.
It's a chicken and eggs. I'm sorry.
I know you do, but also though you have money in accounts that you report to the EDA. I mean, can we spend that money or is it just always in an account that we can't touch?
No, we, we have very, I mean, we have some minor reserves in there. I mean, I mean, very minor.
$76,000?
Yeah, it's probably not the funding source.
We'll look, we'll have that answer for you next time.
Thank you.
We'll clarify that later.
All right, that sounds good.
That's it. I got through that faster than I thought.
I think we've already done questions.
We said we're going to look at the ARPA money for like, you know, possibly some of these. How much are we thinking of? So I can just kind of like, kind of plan in my mind. How much are we?
He wants to go shopping.
Yeah, I want to go.
Yeah.
We're going to come before you very soon.
Yeah, Phil, Mr. Trey has told me there's a deadline, so we have to come to you at the next meeting. So with this. But otherwise, it should be a fairly light meeting on the April 28th, but we will need to have an ARPA discussion during the April 28th meeting as well.
When is, when is the deadline for the ARPA?
Well, he has a report deadline on April 30th, I think, or the 29th. So that's just a report for a plan. And I just found out about this recently, but that's okay. We'll get through it. We'll get the survey results to you all and we'll start pushing ahead. The, 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 the big deadlines are, sorry, allocated by the 2024, spent by 2026. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, by the end of December. So I think we all know when our public meetings and work sessions are coming up. So, and we have two public hearings at the next meeting for the, one for the proposed budget and the second for the environmental fund fee changes. That's it. I'm done.
Great. Any questions, comments?
Thank you all.
Hearing then.
Thank you. As mayor of the city of Stanton, I call the April 7, 2022 budget work session adjourned.